Hey there team, so into the first of the, um, oh yeah, shoot, talk about that in a minute. Yeah, into the, into the first of Panthan's fights that he uploaded onto the Discord. So this will be, you know, again, me, me looking at some factions that I have very little knowledge of. Um, so Assyrian was in the game the last time I played, but perhaps Assyrian has actually had some, some changes since then. I suspect so. Um, now something about this map, you can see about the trees, something I do adore about Silmarillion are the, are the fancy trees. But I'm not quite sure why this, uh, why this map is, is having this issue for me. So if, if somebody knows why and I, I can fix that, please do. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to drop the vegetation detail, uh, down to low. Uh, just to, yeah, sorry about this, boys. Or maybe, nah, maybe it's better on high and, uh, and we'll just have to deal with it jumping in and out. As, as I say again, this, uh, these, these fights are really about the individual unit to unit clashes. That's what I'm looking at and, and how units are reacting. So this is, uh, the second of my, of my Selm school, uh, when he pops the Selm school, uh, or, or Selm study sessions, whatever I've gone for. Uh, we are trying to, trying to teach myself Silmarillion quite quickly, or at least teach myself the capabilities of Silmarillion units quite quickly. So that I know what to expect when I face up against them. So the Randirum, again, Silmarillion has some fun pronunciation. I'm not bad, I don't think, but, um, again, uh, that's another thing, yeah, please, uh, be kind, but point out some things if you want. If I, if I make a little mistake. So, um, we've got the Spearhost here in a nice little phalanx, but they are just spears. Don't know if they have AP, probably not. I'd assume that, uh, that maybe they'd be called something different or, I don't know, I'll, I'll have to check just in case. But, um, either way, it's good to have a phalanx, but lacking that AP might be a struggle for them. Scouts of Gellian, uh, next to them, some sentries of Gellian, uh, those horse archers, they're very fragile looking. Uh, but lots and lots and lots of them, goodness, uh, then the hunters of Wrath L'Oreal, nice sort of javelin looking unit. Uh, and a spear after that. So yeah, they do have a, they do have that little shield in front of them, but overall Assyrian, uh, very, very lightly armored faction. Very green, well, yeah, green elves of Assyrian, of course, and the hunters, hunters of Wrath L'Oreal. Okay, so wait a second. Um, oh wait, no, no, was I just being dumb? No, they all do have that level of armor. They, I don't know if that's an armor upgrade or, or not, but they, they do have this like sort of scale underneath. Uh, I, for some reason, when I first looked at them, I didn't think they had that scale. And I thought maybe there was a different unit over here, so I don't know, they might have some resilience, but again, um, maybe not too much. In front of them, we've got the old Diri me, okay. Um, ondo, ondo yando, ondo, ondo yando, ondo yando, ondo yando. Goodness me, that's going to be a struggle, ondo yando. Uh, but yeah, okay, so we've got a nice big axe behind them and a fancy bow, uh, with this golden, uh, golden scale to them. I'm assuming, yeah, very, very high quality. Archer with that AP, maybe something similar to the warder, wardens of, uh, ba, 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 ba. Those, those fancy boys from Merkwood with the big axes. Um, but we'll see, they might have a special quality to their arrows. I know that, uh, the green elves used to have a ranger unit, they used to have, by ranger unit, I mean a body piercing unit. We've got these, uh, Mithern, yeah, so these are the, I, I guess the most solid unit that Assyrian has with a, with a, a level of armor at least. And, and that AP, it'll sort of smack through some foes. And the Erfin, again, some level of armor and, and just a general good quality archer with an axe on the back too, okay. And then we've got these Kindred of Denethor, which I, I saw before, they absolutely look freaking fantastic. Really do like the looks of these guys. And then Ents, which are, uh, feeling colossal, absolute monster trees on the field today. Uh, they're, they're down as heavy cavalry. So that's interesting. Are they going to behave very different to, to how I, to like the trolls and so on? Perhaps, uh, we'll have to see how they, how they behave. And again, if they're heavy cavalry, then I'm going to have to learn to counter them very differently than, than I'm used to. Uh, so with a, with a forest fight, I'm always going to miss a few units in the deployment. All those Spearhost, so he's actually spread them out. They're hiding and spread out. I wonder is he going to try and use them in that spread out fashion? They'll still have that anti cavalry bonus, uh, but they won't have that phalanx. So the House of Boar, so it used to be the Easterlings were one connected faction, but now they've been split up into two. Uh, so we've got these Wanderers of Thargalian, uh, out front. Um, yeah, nice sort of sword, yeah, it looks like maybe a sword, bow and, and shield. I always liked shielded archers, they're definitely for my frontline, they're, they're fantastic for me. Uh, behind them, some Wardens of Lothland, more of a solid spear and shield by looks of things. Salamandrain Dragon Hunters. Now, is this just a detachment unit? I'm assuming maybe it's just a detachment because it's very small, but they could be, they could be very elite. Uh, we'll, we'll see. Um, Amberine Honor Guard there, I'm assuming, oh, cool, there's our general there. Uh, Honor Guard, I'm assuming, yeah, it looks like little axe and shield, high quality. Boy, I've, I've not seen any of these units in the, well, not any, I've seen the wardens. Alright, yep, um, skirmishers of Lothland again, okay. Um, nice, oh, and then he's actually done a little split with his force, he's got something tucked away all the way over here. The Silver Wind, okay, they look gorgeous. Um, so yeah, a little Jav Cav, maybe lancers after, and then behind them, the Salamandrain Guard. Um, bow's out for now, maybe they've got a little bit of, you know, a melee cavalry twist to them. Sort of one time speed. Uh, see, I'll, I'll always focus on tactics whenever there's nothing else going on, but when that clash happens, we'll focus in on the units, seeing how they behave. And, and really start getting that, getting the vibe with that. So when you've got Assyrian, I'm as- I'm assuming that our man is hoping to, uh, get a little ambush going. He's got a big spread of his army, he doesn't have anything ju- you know, properly split up into various, uh, various little companies. Uh, but he's, he's got them spread over a very wide area. So that should give him the chance to say, jump out and, uh, get some backstabs going just because of the, as I say, the length of his frontline. Spearman of Wrath L'Oreal here, forming up his frontline. Uh, in Shield Wall, I think, looks of how tightly packed they are together, I'm assuming they're in Shield Wall. Over here, got the sentries of Gellian, moving in to try and counter those Salamandrain Guard. Oh, okay, uh, so we've got that same effect that we've got with the Easterlings of Rune. Um, but I'm not too sure what that will be. So he's targeted off at the Silver Wind, so he's probably maybe, well, I'm guessing there may be a bigger threat to him right now than these tunes of Salamandrain Guard. Coming forward there for the charge, so they do have a decent little lance value to them, let's slow down a lot of that for a sec. Cause we've got a little bit of a cav fight, which is again, is something that I'm not too skilled with. Those sentries pulled out these little blades, I don't think, I'm pretty sure the sentries are just, uh, just horse archers. I don't believe that they have any like anti cavalry or anything. More firepower, so he's not really wanted to take that fight. Or well, he's got his Erfin over there now, which, yeah, foot archers are always going to be nasty, uh, to deal with, uh, if you're a horse archer. But yeah, green elves, of course, very, very damaging at range, but that low armor value is, is going to make you really struggling in a proper skirmish fight. So he doesn't really want to take those fights, everybody microing the cav right now by the looks of things. Again, sorry about the, the trees, I'll, I'll check, see if there's a way I can make that sort of stop, but it might be, I don't know, it might just be something to do with the, the density of trees together. My system just being a little bit like, no, too many trees. But I do, I, I, I talk about this all the time, I adore the Silmarillion trees. Also, we've got this effect, the special effect, that's our boys, the, um, ondo yando. I think, uh, ondo yando, oh, yeah, ondoi, on, ondoi or ondo, ondo yando, maybe. Uh, either way, they're, oh, wait a second, that's not one big, oh, that's gorgeous, that's not just one big axe, they've got two axes. Are they little julies? That's absolutely gorgeous of that. Uh, hopefully we get to see these guys in melee later. And there's, uh, the special arrow there. Unfortunately, because these guys are horses, or they're mounted, we won't be able to see them getting thrown about. See, if this is a high mass arrow, we won't see that effect because they, you can't knock a horse over, unfortunately. You can shove it around, but you can't knock it over. Uh, Silver Wind, again, coming in a melee with something there, looks like they, they wiped out some more sentries. Yeah, chased them off the field. See these guys, if they don't have an anti cavalry bonus, then they're just a pretty resilient lancer. And up against those, those horse archers, that's been enough to take them out, yeah, because we're not really seeing any casualties from them in that little confrontation. So that's quite impressive. Uh, Erfin out of ammunition already there. Uh, are they actually, ooh, are they Erfin the guys? Cause I know that some units, well, some factions only have like a few, a bit of ammunition on some of their units. And maybe that is, uh, maybe they're those hybrid guys that, you know, they've got like five arrows to send at you and then they pull those out. Cause we've seen the, uh, the ondo yando have been firing for about the same amount of time there, they've still got shots. And again, everybody just microing their, their cavalry a bit, focusing on the, the right hand side of the battlefield. Not really wanting the, not really wanting to focus their attention on their infantry just yet. Good, hmm, no, no, the Mithern are going to be quite interesting up against the, uh, these eastern boys, but we don't have, I guess, I guess the wardens. Wardens do have a fair bit of ammunition, oh, not ammunition, a fair bit of armor, so we need to see them crapped open. Again, still firepower, nice long range, pretty damn accurate there, clattering them as they're, as they're on the move. They do have shields, luckily for them, uh, but now that they're getting shot in the back, that's not going to count. And yeah, uh, I think, I think Belogos can be pretty happy, um, with, with how that's, that's gone for him. Um, ah, but at the same time, it wasn't, wasn't, uh, nothing catastrophic for Panthan. I think both coming out of that, okay, let's go back to one time speed for now and we'll, we'll wait for another clash. So I think everybody's, it's a longer fight for a one V one. So everybody's, everybody's holding out a bit. Looks like, okay, no, he's back, he's not wanting to, uh, he's not going all the way home. Quite a little cut there, so the, um, Salamandrain are back. Again, just trying to blast in last these sentries of Gellian. Again, prob- what I'm assuming, maybe like on the cheaper end, horse, uh, horse archers. Um, bit lighter, so not really something that you, you want to be getting engaged, uh, in a, in a proper skirmish engagement like they are. Yeah, no, definitely, definitely Shield Wall, eh, from the Spearhost. We're not opening up on them or anything like that, but, um, Belogos has brought some, some archers, some foot archers. Spearhost moving up. Okay, no, no, no. So the cav, cav game is still in, in Belogos' favor, maybe that's what the Spearhost are sort of hanging about for. Getting ready to stop any movements from them. No, 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 anything, anything. Okay, yeah, Wanderers opening up. Let's see. Opening into this side here, trying to get in a little bit of a skirmish fight with these Scouts of Gellian. How quickly are we dropping these boys? Is this, oh, okay, no, that was a cancelled shot, but still taking fire. Axemen of Lothland. Still just, no, no, staring this down, we've not got another clash yet, but I think Belogos is wanting it to happen soon. Which would always be the, you know, it'd always be the desire up against the, the, the green elves, you kind of want to get stuck in, uh, before they, you know, use all of their ammo. So Axeman engaging here, oh, these Scouts of Gellian are out though. I know that a lot of Selm units, you know, the ammunition is not as, as big a thing as it is in, as it is in Reforged. Usually, you know, most of these units have a heck of a lot less of it. So you are going to be throwing the, the melee missile units in a lot earlier. So, okay, good, now we've got a proper sort of melee clash. So Axeman of Lothland, um, getting blasted down by the Spearhost, I was talking them down because, you know, because they don't have any armor piercing or, or they don't have the length of a pike. You know, they're just, uh, they're just this phalanx spear, but they do still have that phalanx animation, they're still going to be fighting together in that way. So maybe it is going to be enough, but saying that, no, the Axemen seem to have turned it around now, they were losing for a minute when they first arrived. It seems to be a bit of a back and forth scrap, not entirely clear who's going to be coming out on top there. Skirmishers of Lothland moving up. Maybe, hmm, don't know who they'll go for. Think anybody maybe, but, I mean, when you're fighting elves, you're always sort of pretty happy with just getting a javelin into an elf. More Axemen coming in should turn that tide for them. I mean, that's the only place we've got a clash right now, cavalry hiding off in the distance there, not really a lot that Panthan can do about that for now. So this is really where we've got the, the only focus at this time. Again, victory is certain right now. Is that just, again, because we've got some decent armor values on the Axemen, they're able to hold out against these little sort of spear jabs that are coming at them? Oh, wait a second, that guy's got a, is he doing, did he have that, uh, phalanx? No, no, they've definitely got the phalanx animation. I just got a bit confused there because of this overhead spear slam there, I wasn't too sure what, how they were, how they were fighting. But no, they're thinking, and again, with those Axemen, I know Ax- Axemen in comparison to like Swordsmen, where you're going to be having that, uh, heavier sort of attack value, but less in the way of like defensive skill. Uh, defensive ability than you would with a sword. Okay, the Ents are coming forward, right, this is something I was wanting to see. Oof, that's a big, okay, right, you're seeing how many people are actually hit by those Ents. Um, oh, geez, oh, okay, that's, that's menacing, that's very scary. So they're heavy cavalry, so you're, you're wanting a spearmen to deal with them, you're not. So my, my intention with stuff like this would be always to, you know, get a, you know, when I see Ents, I'd want to get like a big heavy hammer. Some elite AP, but with this, because they're counted as, are they counted as elephants in, in Selm? Um, I think that's how we're starting getting this, this special like group attack, and, and that's what's classing them as like heavy cavalry. Um, you know, you're wanting javelins, you're wanting spears, which, yeah, I mean, the Salamandrain, maybe that's what they've been brought for. Cause yeah, they, you can see that they are spearing these Ents up quite nicely. Yep, and, and that was one down just there, he's unfortunately bugged out, he stood, but, oh no, he's down again. He just, he just took a second, he saw the trees around him disappearing on and off, he was like, no, I'm going to try that. So the Salamandrain Dragon Hunters have, uh, have been very, very effective there, and I know it's a lot of skirmisher fire in addition to that too. So they've broken through some lines, but interesting, and he's getting them out of there now, but more wardens are, are coming up again, that's a, that's a spearmen unit. But if they can break through the backs here, what's kind of interesting, so they're in comparison to like, you know, a lot of elephant units. Oh god, that's nasty, that's a lot of guys that just got dropped, some of them might get back up, some of them, okay, no, yeah, most of them are getting back up, that's fine. Um, but it's, we're not barreling through the lines, we're coming up to a, to a position and hammering into it, which is interesting. Warden still sort of chasing him around, what we got, the main, main line now, Spear, Spearman of Wrath L'Oreal. Uh, sorry, yep, yep, that is, that is the word, up against those, uh, Wanderers of Thargalian. So yeah, they pulled up those little swords, they are missile units, but I'm wondering, are they, are they kind of a bit of a hybrid? You know, the, the idea of this wanderer being somebody that, yeah, yeah, like he, he can look after himself with a bow, but he is, um, he is competent with a sword for sure. So I think that's maybe what we've got going on here, so up against those Spearmen with that spear malice, they might be able to do okay actually. And that seems to be the case all the way across this frontline, again, the green elves showing that they're, they, they do definitely struggle. Now, the Salamandrain Dragon Hunters, I just need to go and have a look at them, oh god, I love that guys, I love the, um, antlers on his, on his helmet, he looks amazing. Um, and more of these House of Boar troops running in, let me just see if there's another weird clash. Okay, cool, right, uh, Mithern, they were the guys I was wanting to check out, they're alongside some Spearmen of Wrath L'Oreal, which is nice. Um, but you can see, yeah, that AP from the maces and also just the fact that they are, the Mithern are kind of one of the closest things to like a mainline units, unit, I think that the green elves have to offer. I think that this is a bit, a much nicer fight for them than a lot of their, their kin. And that is allowing them to do some great work here, but the Salamandrain Dragon Hunters are, are showing up here now too. And with that sort of phalanx animation again, and just the general power that they're going to be bringing to bear, that's going to be a bit messy. Any cavalry action that we're missing, we are. Um, looks like the cav is crashing into these Hunters of Wrath L'Oreal, but again, those hunters, once they use up their ammunition, are Spearmen. And, uh, it looks like with the, oh, I love it, what do you call this weapon again? Um, I don't remember, the word quesh is coming into my head, but I don't think it's, I, it's not a quesh, that's a silly word. It's something with a Q, I'm pretty sure though. Um, but they're hacking in, it looks like right now Belogos is just focused on another part of the line. Okay, he's pulling them out now, but they've taken a good bit of damage there from all those, uh, those little spear jabs. Even got some, uh, some Spearhost of, of Wrath L'O- oh, sorry, Spearhost of Gellian, not Wrath L'Oreal. I'll jump about, I'll probably end up calling them the, you know, the sentries of Wrath L'Oreal and the Spearhost of Gellian, or just, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a mess, but yeah. Um, more Ents, well, these same Ents coming in now into these, uh, into those wardens. So I know in, in Silmarillion, you, certain units have like monster hunter traits and stuff like that. So maybe this would be the type of thing that they are, they're built for. So I do need to be a bit careful with that, there's a fight that I'll be doing, uh, probably at the very end. Cause I've started with a little fight of my own, I'll probably end this, uh, end this little series with a fight of my own. And, uh, I have to deal with these, uh, I have to deal with the, like the tree kin, as I, using, I know I shouldn't use like warhammer fantasy terminology, but, um, I've got to deal with them. And, uh, so it's quite, seeing their resilience and so on, so I can only imagine the fully sized Ents are, are quite daunting as well. Uh, Erfin in Tower coming forward, um, again, up against these Salamandrain Dragon Hunters, so I need, I need to have a look and see their quality. I don't think they're two hit points or anything like that, but, uh, maybe they're, maybe they're a pretty decent unit all the same, and they've been brought as, say, in these little detachment sizes for the purpose of, of hunting Ents and, and reacting to any like high tier cavalry that is, is breaking through. Skirmishers of Lothland breaking through now as well, getting smacked up quite nicely though. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming the House of Boar, I don't know, maybe I'm jumping to conclusions just because they're all nice and golden and so on. But, uh, cause I know we split the Easterlings into the, um, the loyal and the, uh, the disloyal, well, depending who you say you're loyal to. Uh, factions, because they, when, when, back when I used to play, uh, Silmarillion, you know, two years ago, there was just the Easterling faction. And, uh, you had both houses and in, in one army, and it, I get it, yeah, so splitting them up was, was a good idea, I feel. Um, and hey, I'm always a big fan of getting more like human factions. I think we're kind of at the point, I don't know if there's any more factions planned or, or if there, I know there are not many. Um, so I might have to, I'll, I'll try and check that out, let's see, this is, it's, I'm, I'm just jumping back into Silmarillion, just trying to, trying to understand what's been going on. So you see the skirmishers there, clashing with these Spearmen, it's, is there anybody helping the skirmishers? Of course there are, yeah, the Salamandrain. And it seems like the, oh, Spearman of Wrath L'Oreal actually enjoying that fight a little bit. Interesting. Over here again, the Ents still standing, and Belogos has been trying his best to keep them, keep them in check. He has been responding with like, oh goodness me, yeah, so that's a nasty take down there for you, those, uh, nice red caped boys. Um, maybe is the vibe that you've just got to make sure you've got a fair bit of, of skirmishing power remaining for, for, for something like the Ents? If you know that they're coming, if you know that something that big and nasty, another Ent is dropped there. Cause we had a lot of Ents drop to that early javelin fire and to that early contact with the Salamandrain Guard. But these last few ones, um, you know, obviously Panthan has been using them very carefully, he's been darting around the field with them a fair bit, uh, to keep them, to keep them safe. Some good, some more smashes down there. Uh, some of the Mithern getting sort of maybe knocked around a little bit, but that shouldn't do any damage to them. Yeah, no, it's just knocking this poor elf around. Uh, skirmishers of Lothland pulling out, wavering there, still a pretty, pretty sizable unit, but I can see this, I can see why they are wavering. Where did, ah, shoot, I missed the blooming, the ken of Denethor. Ah, shoot, yes, sorry, but that missed, missed where they've been thrown on into the fight, would have been nice to have seen them engage. I think, uh, I've got quite a few more, for a few more of these scraps, of course, uh, so maybe Assyrian will pop up once more. Axeman of Lothland being pulled out, maybe pulled around. Over here, clashing again, Salamandrain Dragon Hunters. They must be some decent quality unit, uh, if they're able to, if, hold out against this. Ah, there's the Kinsman of, uh, of Denethor, um, showing up now. Cool, defeat is a distinct possibility, surely not, boys, surely not. Um, so Belogos, if the Salamandrain Dragon Hunters are not two hit points, you know, we've not really gone for, for any, I know that two hit point units aren't as, as common, of course, in, in Selm as, as the, are in Reforged. I think, I think this has been, ah, the Honor Guard, I totally forgot about the Honor Guard as well, yeah. So they've been kind of saved, they've been sent on in there now, god, these boys are gorgeous, aren't they? Um, I think there's, one of the big things my, I'm going to struggle with my brain is adjusting from kind of like Reforged mindset. That's, that's a big issue, I think, that, uh, that you, you have to deal with. Ah, fantastic, good, we're seeing the, um, ondo yando. Yeah, ondo yando, um, on, ondo yando, yeah, 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 cool. Uh, we're seeing them with their two little, two little axes coming in and, and smacking around. And we will be able to see some kills after this, so we'll have to try and remember how sort of involved people were in fights, uh, when we, when we check this out. Uh, the Randirum, uh, the Randirum, so I didn't even see these guys during the deployment phase, but the Randirum, are they, are, are they the body piercing guys? I think they used to be the body piercing guys, whether or not we still have body piercing is not something I know. Um, but yeah, they are, they've been sent on in now, not too many of them left, still one Ent, no, two, still three, four! Goodness me, the boys were camouflaged, still four Ents showing around. Um, so they're counted as eight, is that of course because, because they're like, um, elephant units? They technically have like two riders on them, is that the vibe? So, could be, it could be, that's another Ent down though, so they are very, you know, they're, they're getting like bloodied up. I'm assuming they can't like run amok or anything like that, that would be a little bit, uh, I don't know about Treebeard deciding to suddenly snap midway through the battlefield and start throwing people around. But god, they do look frightening, like at that, I think when you're used to seeing the Ents at Reforged size, like the size of a normal troll, and then seeing them at this, where they are seriously towering over the battlefield, like, hey, you know, way, way bigger than everybody else, it's absolutely terrifying. I've been doing, um, yesterday a little, I said I wasn't going to ramble too much during these fights, but we're, we're getting near the end of this one. Um, so I've been doing a, a, a mouse D and D, uh, at our first session yesterday. Um, so it's like a fantasy setting where you're, it's, it's, it's based on the, the Mouse Guard comics. Um, so we're all basically the Night's Watch, but we're mice, and we're defending our little mice king, Mouse Kingdom. Uh, so it's, we, we had to fight a bullfrog, which is basically, you know, the size of a truck in comparison to a mouse. So we had the four of us basically attack on tightening this, uh, this bullfrog, it was, it was a good, good scrap. So that's, uh, that's kind of the, the vibe that we're getting here with these, for these skirmishers of Lothland. Um, so overall, yeah, we're, we're seeing, yeah, green elves definitely taking control off, off the field now and, and beating these guys down. It's, probably speed it on up just, uh, just to get through to that, uh, ending battle screen now, because I think we're probably not far from breaking. We've not had a general death. Um, he'll be part of that Honor Guard over there, yeah, that's, that's a break now. Break from the Boys of Lothland, Salamandrain Guard might end up breaking as we, as we get this little, as we get this little line of just, uh, we're out of here. Uh, spreading down, uh, the, the formation, Kinsman of Denethor still at 68, so again, pretty resilient, but they, they did always fight with backup. They weren't just exposed to the, the real death of it. But again, you can see from their, their, like fancy metal scales, um, you know, really, uh, they've, they've, where is that scale armor? Oh, I think, I think maybe it's, it's scale armor, uh, they are, um, probably pretty damn resilient. Voice is sort of going, I will, I will make myself a cup tea, I'll record another one sort of right away, I'm, I'm wanting to get these, want to get these all recorded up pretty quickly, as I say, these are, these are just meant to be coming out sort of pretty, pretty soon. As I say, I'm, I'm about to, not far, about to, not far off leaving, only really got about two and a half weeks left, so I'd hope to try and get these coming out before I leave so that I can benefit from any, any guidance that people may have. Uh, oh, see, Abo, sorry, Ambaron, Ambaron? Uh, Honor Guard, I'll probably just be referring to them as Honor Guard, I'm afraid. Um, really struggling there, but still we got, oh, more Randirum, ah, maybe the Randirum aren't actually the, because that, this is another unit of them, and I don't, I don't assume we'd get two body piercing units. Not without going into the red limit, which would be quite risky. Honor guard there getting smashed around by that ent, goodness me, so that's constant group damage there and it's constant group stunning as well, that staggering effect, it's horrific. Especially when you've got something like this, the, uh, mithern coming in from behind as you're being staggered, it's absolutely rough. They are staggering allied units there, which of course is not doing damage, but could be a big issue if you're, you know, if you're staggering your own boys and then the enemy can, can capitalize on that in some way. Uh, it can be, it can be rough. Um, so that should be them, still twenty four and, okay, no, admit defeat, but they, they were, they're holding a little bit, but I think with those Ents just constantly staggering, that was, that was gonna be over. So what do we, what do we have? Kinsman, ah, wow, okay, the kinsman actually suffered the same amount of losses as they, as they killed. And it's ondo yando, um, interesting. Are the Salamandrian Guard, those mounted guys, are they two hit points? Are they like, because I think I remember at some point, they were, they were meant to be like the really, really rough boys, um, so maybe that's why? You know, the Ents there, rocking some great kills, um, I, when, when I first saw them go in, I was thinking, well, okay, no, they're gonna get rinsed. And they did take a hell of a lot of damage, but I think like once those javelins stopped, it became very difficult to actually damage them. So I think my vibe is probably if I go against Assyrian or maybe, because I know that you can take those ballerogs as, as Angband, I didn't take them in my last fight just because I wanted to keep it pretty, pretty careful, pretty, uh, pretty normal. Um, that, eh, you know, you need javelins, you need something ready to, to rinse that sort of unit. Those poor sentries of Gellian again, oh, but yeah, they were up against those, so that would kind of explain it. If these, if this cavalry is two hit points. Uh, scouts of Gellian, nice, and again, yeah, you see, as expected, a lot of the damage coming from the, um, coming from the, the archers, but those randirum, oh dear, um, and how about the erfen, yeah, again, erfen doing okay, but, uh, but a, bit of damage for them and mithern, yeah, I was pretty sure that the mithern would do, would do quite, quite a lot of good work. Uh, but yeah, thank you guys very much and, uh, we'll check the next one right after.